The March 24th, 2022, I'm going to board with education meeting. Please rise and welcome the flag of our country. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, everybody, welcome. Dr. Miller will pick us off with superintendent's information.
Yeah, thank you, welcome everybody here. It's great to see so many students here and having the ability to recognize them. They're great things that are doing in our classes. To start off, I wanted to let the board know that we recently recognized, the Lions Club recognized our nurses and Mrs. South and I went and we attended their Lions meeting. It was wonderful, said a lot of great things about our nurses. Sometimes we forget about all the things that these wonderful people do for our kids every single day. So, thank you to the Lions Club for taking the time to recognize them. Also, we had our parent advisory meeting where we had around 20 people come together. We talked about safety updates, our mapping process, which is the management of academic performance and what that means in our classrooms and how we follow student data, track data, and how we provide additional assistance. Also, federal programs explained the budget for the upcoming year with tax revenue down 8.5%. With that, with that being said, next year, we will have 16 professional positions eliminated, five of those through attrition, so people that have retired, and then 11 due to enrollment, which leads me into currently in Ohio County, we have 449 students that do participate with the HOPE Scholarship, but that is money not necessarily being taken from the public school, but drawing down dollars in the number of 2.2 million, $245,000. So, as a public school system, we look at all those moving parts so that we can continue the programs that we offer for our students and continue those programs to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Any questions for Dr. Miller? Hearing none, moving on to moments for mission. Will anyone pick us off?
Sure. I think tonight, my moment for mission is just everyone who we have here to celebrate for our parade of champions. I look forward to hearing about all of the great things and accomplishments that all of our students have achieved or obviously very proud of you all. Lexi, like three-time winner, that's huge. Jameson, I spent a lot of time mat-side. My brother was a state champion wrestler down in Maryland and now my nephew's on that path, so I loved watching wrestling growing up, but congratulations to you and all of our art winners and everyone else. I look forward to hearing more specific accolades. That's all.
Thank you. Anne?
Again, to reiterate what you said about the parade of champions, it's great that there's so much that Ohio County has to offer and the students take advantage of it. And I'd also like to say too, that Wheeling Park had the career fair and they had over 53, I think 53 participants from the county come out and show their wares of Ohio County that our students can take advantage of, and it was a very well-programmed. And the tiny Patriots, I believe, is coming up, and I think that's a wonderful thing that we have going this year, so I just want to say hi. I believe Ohio County School has it all, and if not, we'll try to find it for our students. It's all about the kids. Thank you.
Alright, Sam. Andy?
Thank you, sir. 1980, raise your hand if you were born before 1980. Raise your hand if you were born after 1980. 1980 was the year that the speech team began their 45-year run. What did you think about that for a minute? Some of you weren't even born yet. Actually, most of you were not even born yet. That's a remarkable event in my mind, and particularly since it's not just something that you walk up and do. The work that they do, what they produce, is really remarkable. They spend hours upon hours, days upon days, working on their, on their speeches, and they work them to a point where they can win contests. And that says a lot for our students and for their coaches. We are so proud of what they have accomplished. Who would have ever thought that we could replace people like Bill Cornford and, you know, that, that crew, who've taken a remarkable job for everybody. I got to visit a couple of schools last week, Wheeling Park High School, Allen Grove, Bridge Street, and Richie, I have to share a story with you about Richie. I went to a kindergarten class and this little gal, they were breaking down words, and the word was quiz, and I'm like, oh boy, talk. So, the teacher says, Q-U, little rest her, and quote, underline in the eye, eh, zzz, quiz. She never even heard the word before, but she banged it out, quiz. And that was kindergarten, my, back in the day when I was, back in the day, I was happy, my first graders could do that when I was a principal, so seeing kids at that level, doing that word breakout, it does reveal a bit about what's going on in the school system. I'm very concerned about what's going on politically in our country, not just on a state level, but also at the national level. I don't want to get into great detail about the movement to close the department, the federal Department of Education. I'm just very worried. I'm worried how this is going to affect our students. They take, the federal Department of Education takes care of kids with special needs, takes care of low socioeconomic groups, students, schools. They also feed us. We use our federal dollars to buy food. Ohio County's very lucky. We have enough low socioeconomic that we qualify the whole county for free lunches and breakfast. And how is that going to be affected? I'm very concerned about that. On a state level, we have a bill in place right now, House Bill 3387, and it's to unify and consolidate counties into one school district, basically blowing up local control. The rationale behind it is because they are struggling school systems. But what precedent does that, that start? How's that going to affect us? Another bill, Senate Bill 460, provides except, exemptions for mandatory inoculation. I'm very concerned about that also. So, tomorrow, I'm going to be traveling down, I told Bernie I'm leaving at 5:00 a.m. to get out of the lobby, and I'm going down to Charles and kind of get the, get the scoop on some of these bills and to see what the, what is the impetus behind it, why, why are we doing this? Because I'm very concerned about this. You know, our school district is very lucky. We are a solid school district, so we don't have to worry about consolidation, but that could be something we would have to deal with in the future. That's all. Mr. President?
Bernie. Yeah, I did really attend the parent advisory meeting. It was really good. I always like to see the parents involved. It's good they come and ask questions and I, I just, I really love that. After everybody else, you know, I, when I was looking at my moment for mission and I saw, you know, everybody that's here, it's just, it's amazing. I think it's great, so everybody else support to hear what everybody's up to. Thank you.
Alright, I look forward to hearing everybody. I want to thank Dr. Miller and Mr. Saunders. One of our community members came forward and had some question and wanted data that generally isn't available, but they both took time with him and his, some of his technology challenges to work through those, and, and they're both very busy and taking that time is much appreciated. That's part of what we want to do as a community. Alright, let's get into something fun, parade of champions.
While they're coming in, I just want to share, last week, I had an opportunity to meet with an amazing group, subgroup of this large group, and it's amazing the impact that their coaches, who humbly take zero credit, little credit, for all the amazing things that they do, but these students in front of you talked about how much their coaches care about them if something comes up that may not have anything to do with speech and debate. They're the first people they go to. They had, they give so much to this program, but to sit and listen to students of this, for any student, talk about one of our very own and how much they mean to them, really gives me chills, goosebumps, and it's what every parent would want to hear. So, before we get started and congratulate them for all the things they do, thank you so much for the impact that you've had on so many of our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Or like, you got a battle? Based on my gift.
I made instructions for one group.
Too many strong.
There's a lot of room.
Yeah, we want to see the speech too. We want to see it.
Well, Dr. Miller Board, we are really grateful to be here tonight. I don't think anybody truly understands the pressure that these students and these coaches put on themselves, you know, to maintain this streak is, it's a lot of, not a weird yeah, it's a lot of pressure. But there are three things I want to share out of this team that I just thought were so special. So, two small stories. The first includes Mr. Jerome Maynard, and I just want to acknowledge in front of everybody what an incredible teammate he is. Jerome, for the entirety of the tournament, was the biggest cheerleader, and, you know, he, he deserves a lot of credit for that. Also, not with us tonight is Mr. Tiska. We had, in, I learned so much stuff, but in debate, alright, yes, in debate, when our students end up going against each other, one can bow, can bow out and let the other move forward. And Andrew was tasked with taking on Ms. Ari, and he chose to bow out, and he said, Ari taught me everything that I know how to do here. She is by far the best. She had been sick all weekend, so he gave her a little break, and Ari went on to win a state championship, so those two little stories, that's what, that's what these kids love, and I thought those were so special. And then, if they don't mention it, it is worth mentioning, we did sweep debate. Every single category, we swept. So, I'm just super proud to share those little pieces. Again, 45 years is just, it's insane. I, like, when I say it and people nod, I'm like, no consecutive, no consecutive. In a row, we have won 45 state championships. So, I'm going to turn it over to the executive team and they're going to share their thoughts on the year, and just super proud of you guys.
Hi, everyone. So, this year's Wheeling Park Speech and Debate Team commenced in its journey a year ago and extended its efforts into the summer. During this time, students engaged in researching topics for debate and extended brainy speaking, reviewed and refined literature for interpretive pieces, crafted speeches, and honed their delivery skills. The tournament season began in September. The team competed in nine National Speech and Debate Association tournaments in West Virginia and Pennsylvania during the school year. A total of 37 speech and debate team students participated in tournaments this year. This year, we brought home many individual awards, but also some enormous team awards, including first place at our second annual Dr. Neil F. Olickonter Classic Speech and Debate Tournament, first place at Marshall University's John Marshall Speech and Debate Tournament, and first overall at Three Rivers, which hosted 36 schools and five states. For the first time, five team members have been recognized as academic All-Americans in speech and debate. These are the top 2% of national speech and debate members, earning superior distinction in competition points and high academic achievement, achievement, oh my gosh. And these are Carter Bowers, Sierra Falstich, Kelsey Holsey, Malia Miskowitz, and Grace Robertson Villa Magna, and have earned this distinction this year. From March 13th to 15th, the Speech and Debate Team participated in the West Virginia State Speech and Debate Tournament at West Virginia University. Thirty-four of our 37 team members secured spots on the state team, and out of 34 team members who went to state, 26 team members returned at least one award. Our individual state champions included Ariana Friend, Josephine Gilbert, Morgan Grasky, McKenna Gupferold, Kelsey Holsy, Malia Miskowitz, Grace Robertson Villa Magna, Deja Rizwan, Ella Wheeler, Cyan Lopez, and Jan Schanzinski and Levi Powell, both achieving the status of double state champion. Grace Robertson Villa Magna won the overall individual speech sweepstakes for the weekend, earning the most points throughout the tournament. Our team also swept first place in the four debate events for the first time in a decade. Most depressively, our team clinched first place in the overall sweepstakes with a lead of over 450 points. This victory marked the 45th consecutive speech and debate state championship title for our team. Our season isn't over yet. Next month, we will head to the University of Kentucky for the National Tournament of Champions, where we've had four students qualified by earning bids throughout the year. Then, in May, we are taking nine students to Chicago, Illinois for the NCFL Grand Championships National Tournament. This would not be possible without the continued support of our county. On behalf of the entire Wheeling Park High School Speech and Debate Team, we wish to express our heartfelt appreciation to the Ohio County Board of Education. Your commitment to integrating speech and debate courses into our curriculum taught by skilled educators who significantly contribute to our achievements has been invaluable. Your ongoing financial support enables us to participate in speech tournaments across the school year, for which we are deeply thankful for. Our achievements would not be attainable without your generous support for our team. We also want to thank our county's bus drivers for being so wonderful throughout our speech and debate season. Their reliability and support made it possible for us to travel to competitions and represent our school. We truly appreciate their care and dedication for the team that they showed all year. Additionally, we are deeply grateful for the nurturing atmosphere throughout Wheeling Park. The teachers, secretaries, administration, administrators, and our principal, Mrs. Daler, have all shown tremendous enthusiasm for backing our speech and debate team. Their well wishes before the tournaments and their jubilations and celebration provided by our parents and boosters upon our return to Dwight Palace with another state title were incredibly uplifting. Such support motivates us to strive tirelessly towards meeting the high standards you have established for us. Finally, I want to once more extend our deepest gratitude to Dr. Miller and the Ohio County Board of Education members for taking the time to recognize our achievements tonight. Your, your acknowledgement reminds us, reminds us how fortunate we are to have such a supportive community behind us. The strength and structure of our team would not be possible without the guidance and encouragement we receive from those around us. We can never truly thank any of you enough, our coaches, our school, our community that continuously lift us up. Your support not only helps us grow as competitors, but as individuals, helping us shape into a team that feels like family. We are truly grateful for the support and belief you show in our efforts. We are honored to represent Ohio County, and we will continue to aim to make our community proud.
Thank you, guys. Any board members have any questions for the team while we have them here?
So, you won by 40, how many, 40 did you win by 400?
400.
Put them in some kind of context.
There's 500 points.
Um, each first, each, each first place win is 100 points, and so a competitor has a potential of 100 points for, yeah.
So, who is the best competition in the state?
Hyatton.
Yeah. Hyatton.
Or Cavill.
Hyatton.
Cavill.
In this, yeah.
Parkersburg.
Parkersburg.
I would say those three.
Morgan Hill?
They have a small debating.
They have a small team, yeah.
Yeah, they're working on their debate, yeah. Yeah, we are fortunate to have the success here because of you guys. It's really hard to fund this program and get it off its feet. Like Ms. Daler said, it's hard to really understand what it is we do and, and how it works, and so for other schools to really get it going, they struggle a lot. So, we try within our state to really reach out to others and offer our support how we can, because we think it is so invaluable that these are definitely the future leaders of the world here with us, so we want every school to have it as well.
How many seniors?
Nine. Nine.
Is it possible that we can see Jerome in a cheerleading outfit?
Mrs. Daler, can you introduce the coaches? Absolutely. We have our head coach, Jen Matthew, and then speech and debate would be Kayla Nelson, and then with her sweet little girl is Ms. Isabella Draginsky.
Thank you, guys. Great to be here.
If you all are interested, they do a showcase every year.
Yeah, to get a little vibe of what they do. Thank you so much for having us. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, guys.
It's like you're professionals.
It's like you do it for a sign.
Next up on our list, we are going to do some recognition for some of our recent statewide competition arts winners, so I'd like to introduce Tridolphy Middle School teacher, Mrs. Cynthia Stahansik to come on up here, as well as Wheeling Park High School teachers, Mrs. Stephanie Freeman and Mr. Russ Schultz. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cynthia Stahansik, direct teacher at Tridolphy Middle School. And to Dr. Miller and the board and guests, I have the honor of introducing Joshua Bell Ronnick. Joshua is an eighth grade student at Tridolphy. He excels artistically and academically, and he is holding his lion pencil drawing that he created in my art class earlier this year.
Can you hold it up a little higher?
And Bo actually received three very distinct awards for this artwork. He entered the Women's Club Peace for Art Contest. He was awarded first place at the local level, then his artwork then went on to the state level at the Greenbrier, where he was awarded first place at the middle school level for drawing. And then, surprisingly and very happily, over the weekend, we found out that he won second place overall, his grand highest winner at the tournament, where I can boast and say that he actually was up against artwork from sixth grade through 12th grade. So, his eighth grade artwork beat out a lot of preschool artwork from throughout the state as well. So, we're very proud of him, and I'm sure he'll continue on with many more accolades for his preschool career. And also, unfortunately, not with, oh, Kenzo. I'd also like to introduce Kenzo Futra. And Kenzo also is an eighth grade student at Tridolphy. He also excels academically and artistically as well. This is his crocodile artwork that he also drew in art class this year. Kenzo also received several awards at the Youth Art Month Art Competition recently held at the Parkersburg Art Center at the beginning of March. He also won first place locally, and then he won first place at the state level of the Youth Art Month Contest, so we're very proud of him as well. And just a little background information, sorry, I have not much of course. Youth Art Month itself was initiated in 1961, and the purpose of it, it was in part with the National Art Education Association to promote quality school art programs and also the safe handling of art materials. So, it's celebrated across the United States, and here locally, we have many art contests that our students enter, as well as some different activities within our schools. And also, our big celebration is the Celebration of the Arts, which is being held this Thursday from 4:30 to 6:30 at Wheeling Park High School, which we certainly invite all of you to attend. It's a wonderful, wonderfully event, so if you don't have anything going on, I invite you to come. It's a wonderful showcase of artwork from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, and there's musical performances, except that showcasing many visual arts and some theater as well. So, thank you for that, and thank you for your time and interesting seats.
Congratulations.
Good afternoon, everybody. Dr. Miller, the board. First of all, I want to say thank you all for supporting the arts. We do have an amazing visual art program in Ohio County. Up here, I have two or three state winners for high school, the West Virginia Art Education Initiative. Over here, I have Mo Smith, who is a repeat winner. Last year, she took first place in painting, I'm sorry, she took first place overall last year. There's your, she took first place in mixed media. And right next to me, I have Alan Kreiter, who took first place in drawing, in a charcoal drawing of David Bowie. Another student who got here tonight because he has to work, Christian Yost, took second place in state for sculpture. I didn't bring their works because I want to entice you to come see what they did. It's amazing, because Mo's work wouldn't even fit my, my truck. Yes. It's pretty nice. Mo is the daughter of Katie and Derek Gray. Alan is the daughter of Mara and John Kreiter, and Christian Yost is the son of Heather and Derek Yost. It's been a great year. It has been a fantastic year. For the cycle show this year, out of about 400 entries, they accepted 98. 20 of them was from Wheeling Park. Normally, we're excited to figure it's six or seven. This year, we had 20. Another big ranking point this year is our scholarships. Normally, in a good year, you might get $4,000, and we're really excited. This year, our seniors have earned $250,000 in scholarship. That's incredible. It's really tough to have a scholarship.
The winners that won Youth Art Month were Mr. Schultz's this year, so I just want to congratulate him and them. And we did have nine first-place winners at the Greenbrier this week, so we'll be congratulating them this spring. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to the board and Dr. Miller and the students for having me and Alexis here tonight. I don't know what, what you can say about Alexis and what she's accomplished at Wheeling Park. She came in with tremendous expectations and she exceeded those expectations beyond my wildest dreams. She's a state champion, an OKAC champion. She scored over 2,600 points at Wheeling Park. No other player's ever scored more than 2,000. She's the two-time area winner, which is given out to the most outstanding player in the state by the sports writers. She's a three-time Max Preps Award winner, and now she's a three-time and the only three-time Gatorade Award winner. But what a lot of people don't know about Alexis is she's just an awesome person. She is the model student athlete. I want to recognize Jamie and Stacy Gordis for raising such a wonderful person. I guess the best thing I can say about Alexis is I, I hope every coach out there gets to coach a kid like Alexis Gordis. It's, uh, it's going to be very tough to not have Alexis. I've already had some nights crying myself to sleep thinking about not having her, but no, just what she's done in four years. I mean, she's, she's changed her program. I can't say enough about her, so I'm going to let her say a few words.
I just want to thank everybody here for recognizing me. This is the second time I think I've been here, once for our state show, you should too, so. And for everything that all of the members of the Board of Education, all Ohio County does for me and for our athletic program, but also just the schools in general. I've been a part of many different things, not just basketball, so Ohio County really does provide a place for everybody, and I really appreciate that. But the support that we have at all of our games and that have recognized me for all of my achievements, I couldn't be more thankful. I always see at least a few of you guys at all of our games, so. So it's meant a lot and I really appreciate you guys coming. Thank you.
If I could possibly just add a comment. This young lady is very special. She's kind, thoughtful. Academically, she excels in the classroom, but she's a good person. Meaning she's a good friend, she's a good teammate, she lifts people up. She's what everybody, every child you want to take away is being around someone like Lex. So in a parent position, I appreciate everything you've done. But in a superintendent role, that's what we want every child to do. So thank you, good luck, and we'll continue to follow you.
Yeah, and Lex, well, and I don't know if I'm allowed to say where she ranks in the class, but I'll just say she's in the top two. 266 students, so. Everyone sees the basketball player, but she's, she's a very well-rounded kid, so.
Mr. Doyle, you're up.
Well, if you thought that was great, now we have another.
I would just again like to thank you all for the constant support during our season and this acknowledgement today. We have Jameson Maynard here, he was recently a state champion. And thing about Jameson is, is that as a coach, this is just somebody that you love to have on the team. Since he was a freshman with us, we looked at him for his leadership. He's somebody who we kind of, we lean on as almost like a player-coach with us. He's somebody who is going to be, it's the perfect representation of what we want out of Wheeling Park Wrestling. With his leadership, his wrestling ability, and just his character. He is just the ideal student athlete out of Wheeling Park. And then he can go on and tell you his, his future plans, but he, he's going to, he has some lofty plans. And, and it's, it's great that, and I'm, I'm proud of him. And I think that Wheeling Park Wrestling Program is better because of him. And just to, a testament to his character, he was actually just recently named a finalist for a drug-free club essay contest. So academically, athletically, Jameson is, is who we want in Wheeling Park Wrestling. And I'll let Jameson introduce himself and tell you a little about himself.
Thank you, Coach. That was very nice. Thank you guys for having me. This is the second time I've been here also for our state championship, my freshman year. Which, you know, that was a great accomplishment and I think you guys are having me back here. I want to thank the community and my, the great support system I have around me. You know, my family, my mom and dad haven't missed a match in high school, even middle school, elementary school, doesn't matter. They were, they were there for everything. Teachers, coaches, neighbors, friends, family, you know, you guys all had a great impact. Mr. Gordis for sending me the maggots with my new slippings, you know. This is great, thanks for having me. Yeah, so I plan to attend the United States Naval Academy in the fall, which I'm very excited about. You know, I'll, I'll leave here in the middle of June. And I'd say it's an incredible opportunity and I couldn't be more excited for it. And again, thank you for all the guys for reaching out and.
I'll lock that one up for you.
I'll thank you guys again.
Do you think his GPA is up there also, Greg, mom?
Pretty good.
He may not be one or two, but he's up there, right?
He's up first.
Seven, I believe.
That's great, that's great.
Thank you, congratulations.
I would just like to add too that Jameson's wrestling at the High School National Tournament this weekend. So he placed sixth last year in the High School National Tournament. So looking to improve upon that this year.
Where is that? Virginia Beach.
All right, guys, we're going to get into real business if you guys want to leave.
Thank you for having us.
Now it gets worse. Thank you.
Dr. Miller, personnel.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Philip Payne for his professional upgrade and degree status from a bachelor's to a master's. I would also ask that the board please remove Alicia Purton from the professional employee being recommended for transfer and subsequent assignment for the 25, 26 school year. Please add Tina Chandler to the service personnel whose contracts are being recommended for termination at the end of the 24, 25 school year. And finally, um, finally, I have a finally. I have a finally. Or just finally. I thought you said it all. It was handwritten. Here. Oh, that's not the finally I was looking for. And please remove Tina Chandler from the service personnel substitute job that's being recommended for termination at the end of the 24, 25 school year. And all other personnel as presented.
Hey President, can I make a comment?
Okay.
Okay, I want to recognize Paula DeBudrich, who is retired. Paula has served the Ohio County Schools as well. She is an outstanding person in the finance offices, ends up payroll. How long has she been in there? Forty-some years.
Wow.
Yes, so we're going to miss Paula.
All right, thank you for mentioning that, Andy. Any questions for Kim about the personnel? Hearing none, have a motion to accept the personnel recommendations as presented. At first, I'm going to make these seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please signal a stand aye.
Aye.
Propose unanimous? Thank you. Reports and follow-up, school safety, Mr. Jones.
Just briefly, just a continuation of let you know that Dr. Shepherd and I are still going around doing our safety checks. I gave you the checklist a couple meetings ago. We're almost done with Wheeling Park and I think we still have maybe two or seven left. And we'll be done. So everything's going well, we're learning some things and enhancing our safety and able to get some things fixed that just gave us an opportunity to speak. Also gives us an opportunity to sit, to sit with each school resource officer and have a chat with them about their building. So everything's going well on that front.
How do the metal detectors work now?
Good. Yeah, everything's good. A lot of us was just here last week to check in to make sure everything was working well. Yeah, everything's good.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jones? All right, moving on to Ohio County Schools Walking Trail.
Dr. Miller, Mr. Jones, President Croft, and the Board of Ed. I want to take a second to talk about an initiative that has quite literally been a year in the making. Last year around this time, I was training for the Ogden on the trail. And there are a ton of gorgeous murals down there. And I do my best thinking when I am either running or in the shower. And while running, I decided we need an Ohio County Schools mural on the trail. We service so many children, we have such thriving arts programs. So a meeting with Wheeling Heritage expanded into grants from West Virginia Arts and Culture, Expand Energy, and a match grant from the Wheeling Arts and Culture Commission, a partnership with West Virginia muralist Mindy Yarborough. And then Mrs. Stephanie Freeman, Mr. Russ Schultz. And I want to call up Ian Reckline, who's been sitting here panicking patiently. Ian took this on full force and has designed a West Virginia, Ohio County Schools themed mural that she's a large-scale copy of. That pending approval from you all and a thumbs up mid-April, we will be adding it to the walking trail. So I want to hand this over to Ian. You can do this.
Hello, my name is Ian Reckline, as already stated. Myself as well as a few of my fellows.
Peers.
Artists, classmates, as well as two incredible Wheeling Park teachers, Ms. Freeman and Mr. Schultz. Have helped me design a mural that will be up at Heritage Board. So as already stated, this will be at the Heritage Board Trail.
A little higher, Karen.
April 11th and 12th, me and some upperclassmen will be down there for a couple days. Drawing it out and planning it and painting the entire thing together. I think we're really going to have a blast. It's, half of it was a design given to me by Mr. Schultz in his classroom. This portion. And then I did a survey between the two classes to see what things, like people really thought reminded them of West Virginia and what I should include in the mural. So we have things that not only represent West Virginia, but are part of the school. So we have the Ohio County logo, we have music notes and all types of science and education. And then every book represents something about West Virginia history or local flora or fauna found in West Virginia. And so of course also off man, because of course. So I think the collaboration, I think we did a really good job. And I think I, it's going to be extremely fun to paint it. And I think I did look ready as well.
What size will it be? How big?
About, about that, yeah. Maybe like half of it. Heritage Port Trail next to, in downtown Wheeling, next to all the other murals.
You know where the playground is? Downtown, right there. Yeah, you'll see a butterfly mural, we'll be right next to that. We've had approval by the commission. Mr. Aaron has been in on this since last year, so. Excited to be there. What's the other figure there?
That, that's a drawing man, Kim. Used to represent some of our arts programs and our classes at Wheeling Park.
Tell them about the store.
Oh, Berry Supply. So I included one of the books as Berry Supply, which was my grandfather's store. Dad taught at Wheeling. Which has been taken over by another.
Waterfront.
Waterfront. Exactly, waterfront, whole mountain. And it means a lot to me to be able to have part of myself and part of my family's history in something that's not only so close, but so. I just, I just think it's very important. And it just means a lot to me that I can do something for the community. Like he did something for the community, my grandfather would be owning the store. Like a little part of me in West Virginia history, West Virginia, and Wheeling, Wheeling history.
Great job, you did great.
With the board, since we're all here, we've seen that. May I entertain a motion to accept that mural as something the board would concur on? First and a second, any other comment? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose. Thank you very much.
I'm coming, I'm coming. All right, guys, this is the invitation and this is.
What's the count?
We're done with that. Working on it. We're done with that.
Saw that production.
And I figured it out, not your son. Well, good evening, Dr. Miller, Mr. Jones, Mr. Puff, members of the board, central office staff. I, I have to say that being at a meeting like this is so warming to my soul. The youth of this county just give me hope. Give me hope and that's what we're trying to do through this program. So I'm here tonight just to celebrate a program that's been around for 10 years now. My name's Jessica Waugh-Doherty. And for the last 19 years, I've been the Title I School Counselor at Madison Elementary School. I also have Olivia Beal with me. Just recently changed her last name in the last 10 days. And Olivia helps me run this program at Madison. So she's here in the audience as well. And I'm pleased just to be able to celebrate and talk with you today about something that has the power to change lives, shape futures, and build stronger communities, mentoring our youth. I want to say that I believe in mentoring so much. Not only do we have this program that's having a really big birthday this year, but I also personally have a mentee through the Youth Mentoring Network. And I'm always going to plug that. I know you have a big smile on your face, you do too. Mentoring truly not just changes the lives of the children, but it changes the lives in the hearts of the adults that provide the mentorship to the children. The little girl that I have as a mentee, her name is Kailiana. The work that I do with her is tenfold deeper in my heart than I think what I do for her. She does that for me. It's an amazing thing to do and I encourage any adult in this room, if you're looking for a way to fulfill your life and to truly give back for our community, mentor. It's a beautiful thing to do. So I just want you to think about the challenges young people face today. Many struggle with self-doubt, anxiety, peer pressure, and uncertainty about their future. Lots of students lack positive role models while others face difficult circumstances at home or in their communities. Now imagine the difference that one caring, supportive adult can make in a young person's life. And that is the power of mentorship. In the spring of 2015, this month, 10 years, a collaboration between Madison Elementary and U Theta Chi Omega of West Liberty University was formed. Now I have with me, one, two, three, four, five, six members of that sorority who are currently mentors in the ALPAS with Madison Gals program. But I also have my daughter, Jillian Docson, in the audience. Because it was Jillian's idea to do this in the first place. In the spring of 2015, she was the vice president of that sorority. And she came to me and said, we are looking for a way to give back locally. You always talk about your kids, because you know if you've grown up with an educator as a mom, all we talk about are our kids. And she said, what can we do? We want to come down and do something with your kids at Madison. And so ALPAS was born. And Jillian was part of the first cadre of, of young women to go through that mentoring program. And the sorority has even created a position which Kate holds. That is the community liaison that keeps the connection between me and the sorority alive each year. And helps me plan events between the school and the sorority. And not only that, I was about seven and a half months pregnant. And they inducted me as an honorary inductee into Chi Omega. So now I am part of the sisterhood as well. Have been for about seven years now. So our original plan was to meet monthly and encourage our elementary girls to learn about the benefits of sticking with their education, explore new adventures, and most importantly, to build healthy relationships with trusted adults. Over the last decade, we have done so many things. We have explored arts, sports, music, science, self-care, nutrition, cooking. nutrition, cooking and post-secondary options. We feel that we are empowering our young girls to look into their futures as a bright source of hope and ability to break cycles and start new paths for themselves. And now is when I was gonna show that video, but that's okay. Yeah, that's okay, we can go through some of the pictures now and just show you some of their sweet faces. I can't see it from this angle, sorry. Wanna make you go?
Yeah.
Just show them a couple of pictures of some of the things we do. So last year, we were able to have Miss West Virginia and Miss West Virginia teen come and we did a royalty party. We did a lot of confidence building, self-esteem, manners, poise, and just made the girls feel like princesses for the day. And that was a beautiful community collaboration with so many donations. Yes, we went this past fall up to Carnegie and got to visit Pittsburgh and there is nothing like seeing a little girl who maybe hasn't been through the tunnels of Willing, go through the tunnels of Pittsburgh and count down 10, 9, all the way down and bust into Pittsburgh. Oh my gosh, they were, it was amazing to see their faces and that experience was beautiful. We had a bug lady come, just females in science. That was a terrifying. And a lot of them, and I think some of you, where I think your picture is in there, it was, and I think yours is too, it was, it was a lot of bugs. And then we do visits to campus. So this program reaches the girls in third, fourth and fifth grade and so if they're at Madison that entire time, they are in this program for three years and then they get three campus visits, not including the extra trips that their teachers take them up for things. But through ALPAS, each one of our participants gets to go to campus three times and will be one up, that's always our last trip of the year is to campus. So they're getting exposed to lots of post-secondary options and what the college life looks like, like for them. And we hope that they take those seeds planted and do something with that in their lives. I want to give an opportunity to let a couple of the young women who are here from Chi Omega come up and just share because when we mentor, it becomes something bigger than ourselves. And I want to give a couple of these young ladies just a moment to talk a little bit about how mentoring has impacted them. Thank you.
Hi guys, my name is Erica Davis and I am currently a senior at West Lib. Other than just, you know, obtaining my degree, this program has been just the biggest takeaway of my entire college experience. I always knew I wanted to make an impact for people, children, whomever. And being able to do this in real time is something that I'm always going to, you know, look back on so fondly and feel very proud of myself. Because as a girl or just human in general, life is hard and being able to personally myself have someone to look up to, like through my life, I would love being that for someone else. And I'm so glad this program is here to continue to do that for other girls as well.
And what is your degree?
I am getting my bachelor's degree in speech pathology and audiology.
Jack with the gal over there.
My name is Paige, I'm also a senior at West Liberty University and I could go on and on for hours about what this program needs to be. I mean, not only are we impacting their lives, but they're impacting ours too. Like these little girls, whenever you see them, their face is just light up with joy. And I know like that makes us feel so special, especially just the bonds that you make with the girls in general, like we see the same girls every single time, like I haven't seen them over Christmas break and the girl came up to me, she was like, "Where have you been? Like I missed you." And like just as much as they miss us, we miss them just as much. Like this is something that we push so hard in our sorority to go and like make an impact on these girls because you don't realize how much you are impacting them until you go. It takes one time to go and see what you're doing for these little girls and it's, it's nonstop. We have alumni all the time and say, "Can we come back and like see them too?" Like it's just amazing, so we thank all of you guys so much for everything that you guys do.
What are you studying?
Doing hygiene.
We're gonna help him pour it.
I have to agree, it is a thrilling thing to be a part of. I just wanna share a couple stats. We have been making a difference one Saturday morning a month for 10 years now, so happy birthday, ALPAS. We celebrate an estimated 200 young women as mentors over the last decade that have come through West Liberty University. 400 little girls' hearts and lives changed, over 70 mentoring events and countless Madison alumni who have graduated from high school and are continuing their education or who have entered the workforce. And, and that's our goal. And when they come back and walk in their caps and gowns in May, the first thing they ask me, hands down, you still do ALPAS? Yes, that's what they ask me when they come back. So enough time has gone by that they're starting to come back and I'm seeing the fruits of our labors, which is amazing to me. So I just wanna celebrate the lives impacted through ALPAS. I wanted to come here and share something great that's happening, it's happening in the shadows and in the corners on quiet Saturday mornings when the building is empty. Olivia and I might make reservations and we have a grant that funds this. We reserve the buses and buy tickets and make sure the meals are paid for, but it's these young women that come in and hit the ground running and have made those really special relationships with our little ones. And I know that it's something they're going to remember for the rest of their lives. So I'm really proud of it and I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nice question, how many, how many girls do you have involved in it this year from Madison? Sorry. How many girls are involved from Madison?
We usually have 25 or 30 little girls that show up to each event. And we hold six a year.
Okay, so do you, do they have to become part of the program or can they just come?
They come, they come. Yes, last time, because transportation is an issue for some and we don't have buses that bring them on Saturdays and last time we had some little girls that have just been aching to come. We actually had a teacher drive around and pick some kids up and bring them to me. I'm not able to do that because I'm there setting up. But we had that happen to some little girls who hadn't been able to come that are just in third grade got to come and we'll make sure they get to future ones, so it's pretty awesome.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, please thank Mrs. Creo. My wife's team effort, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Okay, do you guys need to take a picture? She knows I have a picture.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Bennet, you are our financial matters, scheduled proposed levy rates.
The annual scheduled proposed levy rates is considered a mere consideration. The total assessed values as certified by the assessor of Ohio County equal the amount of $3,115,349 for fiscal year 26. This is a good increase in property values, about $470,000. The amount that is trackeded only from the regular levy, the ten per annum, increased from the current year's amount of $2,310,000, $2,310,198 to $2,377,175 for the amount of increase of $170,000. When compared to the current year, these values would produce gross revenue based on the estimated tax collections for the general current expense fund of $8,788,057 less than the current year's income. Preliminary computations that have been sent by the West Virginia Department of Education, state aid, will increase by about $2.4 million given as an estimate. That will be based on any other actions that may happen at the state legislature. Every percentage point that may be increased or decreased on the excess levy will result in an increase or decrease of about $221,703 in revenue. Depending on what operating, on what level of operating, the excess levy rate that the board approves tonight, the combined total of the regular levy and the operating excess levy will produce about $38 million for the general current expense fund in fiscal year 26 for about 45% of the total operating budget. Tonight, you can raise, sorry, I'm writing your data on your notebook. Tonight, you can raise the operating levy rates to 100% on the excess levy, you can keep the operating levy rate at the same, or the excess levy rate at the same that it is in the current year, or you can reduce the rate to another level. The administration's recommending that the excess levy rate stay the same rate, which currently is 95.5% of the maximum allowed and voted upon. A motion will be needed tonight to approve the schedule of proposed levy rates. The schedule will then be submitted to the West Virginia State Auditor's Office for review and approval. When the levy rates are approved, the Ohio County Board of Education will reconvene this meeting by law on the third Tuesday in April, which is April 15th at 8:00 AM, to officially adopt the fiscal year 26 levy rates. This year, a second motion will be needed for the, for the new excess levy that will take place for the library excess levy. The levy will generate approximately $927,121 at the rate voted on, on May 14th, 2024. The Ohio County Schools will serve as a pass through for this revenue. And you will also need to revote on, on that levy rate on April 15th.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bennet, Longdes? And it's your recommendation, Dr. Miller, that the, the levy rates, excess levy rates stay the same at 95.5%?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion accepting Dr. Miller's and the administration's recommendation to keep current excess levy rate at 95.9, 95.5% of the maximum allowed. I have a first and a second, going to do the second one. Any further discussion on that? Here and none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Bennet and Dr. Menter, is it Dr. Miller? Dr. Menter? Let's just change your name. Is it your recommendation that we approve the rate for the library excess levy, the Ohio County Public Library?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion accepting Dr. Miller's recommendation to approve the rates for the excess levy for the Ohio County Lib, the Ohio County Library. I have a first and a second. A first and a second, any further discussion?
That, just for clarity purposes for anyone watching, so that's what was voted on by the public. Was it last May or?
May 14th.
May 14th, so the public voted to, it was separated out from our Ohio County Schools levy, although it's a portion of our levy. So that's what was voted on by the public and approved by the public in May of last year, so.
Right, and it was something that this board permitted the library to run and the public overwhelmingly supported the excess levy for this for the library.
What is that levy rate?
It'll be 100% of the voted on rate.
Yeah, it's 100%, which will generate $927,121.
And we don't have anything on that rate, is that correct?
Not the public voted on.
I mean, you do have say because it is at the government.
But I would suspect we should stick to the public voted on.
Yes.
So there's a first and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion passes, congratulations, all right. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Oh, levy estimate too, okay.
It's, it's really as presented for, for Mr. Alpini and, and Mr. Ginnis, this is, this, what it, this is an estimate of our state. It's required by the state and if you put together an estimate at this time, it is, it is a rough estimate. So I'm having field and questions, but it's just a vote now.
So I hear you stressing estimate.
I am.
Gotcha. Any questions for Mr. Bennet?
So that's the total amount, Stephen, that 83,500, or 83 million 540,583?
As of, as of today, I highly doubt that that will be the exact amount in, in May.
So may I have a motion to accept Mr. Bennet's very rough, likely to change estimate of our operating budget? I have a first, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second, any further discussion? Here and none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now I wanted to consent agenda. I'd like to remove the bidding policy, just so I can explain the changes I made and the paid bills, 8.5 and 8.6. Anything else anybody would like removed?
Uh, 8.4.
Yeah, I was gonna say 8.4.
8.4 through 8.6. If you entertain, I'll begin with the bidding policy. And so you may recall that we had discussed the bidding policy at the last meeting and the policy itself was a bit convoluted. So I revised it to simply incorporate, as I said I would at the meeting, and I think that was distributed, was that distributed today, Joyce?
Yeah.
And so it's in board docs and it's just, it will be better that when there is a bid, that Steve and his team just refer to the statute because it's a little bit confusing. So if you have any questions for me, now's the time to ask, otherwise we'll just throw it back into the consent agenda.
I, one change that I would suggest that we make is under paragraph four, where it says preference shall be given to resident vendors in accordance with and as permitted by West Virginia Code 5A-3-37, et cetera. I would, my suggestion is that we change that to may be given, just to give the board the opportunity to choose whether or not to do that based on whatever the circumstances may be. I think that we would always want to choose our local vendors when we can, but you never know what may come down by, what kind of bids we might receive and if we wanna have the ability to, I think we would like, like to have the ability to not, I don't think we wanna be held to having to choose.
Nice to have an option.
Yeah, so that's, that's my suggestion.
I'm fine with that. Anne, you okay with that?
Definitely.
Bernie? Anne?
Yeah.
All right, so the shall shall be changed to May, just to leave some discretion to the board. Memorandum of agreement, was that in our act?
The Vista?
The memorandum of agreement with the Vista?
Yes. Well, I mean, I, yeah, I just, today.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
I knew I saw it.
All right, so do you want to pull that off?
Yeah, Bernie, you mentioned it as well, do you wanna start?
What is it exactly?
Miss Shay is here. She just came out of the daycare.
Oh, good, you made it. So this is a renewal, so this, we've completed one year almost of our partnership with Education Alliance and AmeriCorps. Azariah Bayes has been our AmeriCorps Vista this year and he has served in the capacity of spending 35 hours a week as a volunteer. He gets paid through the AmeriCorps program, but he has helped us not only with our robotics program, also with our innovation pieces. So he has helped with teacher training, he's worked with me in schools doing innovative projects with students and again helped hugely with our robotics program and our signature events. So we are asking to renew that for one more year. It's a great program for us and it's a great program for a student and a person like him.
So a couple, a couple questions. Did you have, were you gonna ask me anything, Bernie?
No, I'm just gonna answer your $2,500 that we have to kick in for that, thanks. We might as well spend.
I do.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that's the, that's our total out of pocket because the rest is paid for by the AmeriCorps.
Absolutely. $2,500, and then we go ahead and put in the $1,500 for reimbursement for travel so that that doesn't have to go through us, it goes through Education Alliance. And so he submitted travel pieces, so the $4,000 total.
$4,000, okay. And then, yeah, it was, it was blank in terms of who the person was gonna be. It's gonna be Azariah Bayes again?
All right.
Great, thank you.
Bills. Bernie, you wanna kick us off, one down, I am?
Sure.
I'd like, I just had a couple. Oh, yeah, check 223205 for the Highlands for the robotics, the $21,534. Get any revenues out of that or is that a straight?
We, as I recall, we get a little bit of revenue back on the Highlands.
I missed the question. Daniel, you probably, you, yes, do you want to give that?
Yes, please go back. Well, last year, the county gave us a break on that, I mean, I just wanted to make it clear this year.
I missed the question, sorry.
The 21534 that we paid to the Highland Sports Complex, and last year, the county commissioned discounting what we paid for that.
Yes, last year, they gave us a discount on the pipe and drink last year, but we did not see that.
We did not?
Yeah.
How much was that? What's the difference?
It's about $3,000, don't look at that.
We raised sponsorships to cover most of our costs.
Yes, all the costs.
All the costs.
Yeah, this, this is all, this is not, I don't think there's hardly any technology.
Okay. Congratulations.
I'm gonna be making money, I'm figuring out those final numbers this week, so.
It was great back in that, it just stood out like a very large number to me that we had to pay the Highlands that. I was actually gonna ask if the county would kick anything in there, Mr. Croft, for my question.
We, we will make, the money that is left over will be used to take our schools and return them back.
When, when is that, Jojo?
Um, May.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And then the second one I have a question on, 223207, the bus line to take the board of basketball to the Springfield, and then to Parker's Park. We, and I ask this every time, I apologize. I thought we sent one show a year on time.
It's, it's a percentage, it's like 10% of, of games, so it does work out to one.
Two for basketball.
Yeah. It ended up.
That's cool, yeah, okay, that's cool. Yeah, and then 223211, the West Virginia Department of Education for $1,350 for virtual school tuition. What, what is that?
So they have.
Spanish?
So they have certain classes that, that are, that are, we have students who will do it through West Virginia Virtual Schools. So, and then, so that's.
Okay. And then the last one I had was 220219, 223219, 223220, will be eighty specialties for doors, one for eighty-two forty, and the other for $12,800. Are these single doors, multiple doors? I know doors are ridiculously expensive.
Woodsdale Door was their bigger back door that they use all the time for student parent drop-off in back alley that needed to be replaced. And then the one for $12,800 is the, it's a double, double-door bullet-resistant one in front of the main office area.
Okay, and do we bid that?
The, there are total doors, and that's the only place that you can get it from.
Okay. That's all I have. Andy, do you have any?
No, sir, I do not.
Ann? Molly?
I have a couple. Check 11139, graphics, twenty-two signs at the high school. So general equipment complex sign, general equipment athletic sign. Curious what signs those are.
Yeah, I think those are the new, when you go up, if you remember, when the multi-use field was being built, there was a sign up there that said, you know, McKinley and the Sauer Associates. Well, that's no longer there, now there's a new picture, there's a new picture up there that shows like the sports complex, so it's an overhead shot of the multi-use field, baseball field, tennis courts, and the track that's down over the side. And then there are directional signs showing how to get to each of those so that people know where to go when they come up on a hill.
They're nice. Um, let's see, I don't have a guess. You know, I have to ask, check 223238, Siemens BOE Video Intercom?
Yes, all those Siemens ones we were talking about on Thursday. That's the, there were three video intercom places put in the BOE building. There were communications that occurred, and it was asked that these were gotten very quickly put in place. So there are three individuals, the front door can now stay locked, and there are three individuals in the board of education office that can press the button and see who it is to let in the building.
Oh, okay, so this is, so if someone comes to the front door, it's locked currently? And they have buzz before they can come in?
Yes, and then they can see who it is out there.
Okay, I didn't remember I was talking about that. Okay. All right, that's all.
Did we vote on that? On that one? Yeah, the 881271? No, we did not. Check 223232, integrity elevator LLC, partial containment.
How much more is left on that? That's $75,000, $200. I think it was $80,000 altogether. That's from the flooding over on the stadium.
Did we, when we talked about this before, did you all say that there, our change is being made so that if it floods again, it won't kill the elevator?
Yes, the, all the mechanics and stuff is up in the air, so if one's coming, we bring the elevator up to the top floor and hopefully it minimizes the damage.
Does it just retain each of the left over right now?
Yeah.
Did we ever get email on that? I have no further questions on the pay bills. So we'll put the eight dot four, eight dot five, and eight dot six back into the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of shall being changed for may on the bidding policy. I have a first, may I have a second?
Second.
A first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. It's unanimous. Are there any delegations tonight?
No.
No delegations. Board member comments? Molly, you wanna kick us off?
Yeah, I don't have anything further. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work.
Ann?
I'd just like to say that the parade of champions, it's always wonderful to see what our students are doing in the county. And a thank you to the people, the parents, grandparents, everybody in the county with their children that help us to pass along and get our children and get them ready for what's out there in the world. It's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
All right, Andy. Just to kind of add to what Ann has just mentioned. You don't think that public education is being successful after coming to the meeting tonight? You're missing the duck. We have a wonderful school system, as evidenced by all the parade of champions tonight, the things that this board has approved and worked on. And public education is successful in Ohio County. Thank you. Bernie?
No, nothing further.
Nothing from me either. Future meeting is Monday, April 14, 2025, is a regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. at the board office. Tuesday, April 15, which is tax day, 2025, a levy order meeting at 8:00 a.m. the board office reconvened from the March 24, 2025 recessed meeting. And Monday, the 28th, 2025, regular meeting, 6:00 p.m. at the board office. There being no further visits to the board, this meeting is recessed.